Council will come into order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Who's here but not in her chair. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counsel President O'Malley.
Here. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that Urban Media Arts, UMA, will be recording this evening's meeting, so please be aware, audio and video recordings of this meeting will be taking place. First order of business. We have public comment.
We do not have anything tonight.
We have nothing that has been sent in and no one has signed up. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. The only thing on tonight's consent agenda are minutes from the meeting of April 8th, 2025. Does anyone want to remove the minutes from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion.
Counselor Simonelli, seconded by Counselor Sika. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes in the consent agenda have been approved. Next order of business.
Paper 185-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, 12.12.030 use regulations, is hereby amended as follows, to update existing table of use regulations to correspond with the recent site plan review regulations for daycare centers, nonprofit educational facilities, and religious facilities as ordained in paper 356, series of 2024.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to... Counselor Winslow, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I can just speak briefly. Yeah, so this, as we all know, we recently passed ordinance updates for site plan review for daycares, nonprofit educational institutions, religious facilities. What we... So that was really adding a site plan review section to the ordinances. Our oversight was we did not change the table of uses to reflect that, that there should be SPR for those uses. So just to be clear, that there's their site plan review for those uses when they come up. So that, I thank City Planner Romero for pointing that out. And so this is just sort of an administrative correction to remedy that oversight. So, and she, we doing it tonight so that the plan is to have a public hearing sometime in May, and we wanted to make sure we got this out now so that it can be scheduled for the public hearing. And so I make a motion that we refer this to a joint planning and rules and ordinance committee for a public hearing, so.
Seconded by Counselor, there's a motion to refer this to a joint ordinance and planning board hearing. Seconded by Counselor Simonelli, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That has been referred unanimously. Next order of business.
Paper 186-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, Title 12 zoning, is hereby amended as follows, to be considered in conjunction with paper 153, series of 2025, to clarify and update existing usable open space requirements and regulations regarding paving of yard areas of residential properties.
Hand it over to Counselor Winslow for this paper.
Yeah, again, this is a paper that we have had, you know, under discussion, and again, because we're going to have a joint planning and rules and ordinance committee coming up in May. This was put on the agenda so that this could be referred to that committee so it can have a public hearing. So that's the purpose of having this paper tonight. So that'll be discussed further in, at that planning and rules and ordinance meeting. So, but it's an update to various regulations described here, so.
So on Counselor Winslow's motion to refer this to a joint ordinance and planning board, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That has been referred to a joint ordinance and planning board hearing. Next order of business.
Paper 157-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the city of Malden is hereby amended by adding 2.12.200 Veteran Service Coordinator to include the following.
Counselor Winslow for the paper.
Can we also have paper 158-25 read as well so we can, we can, because we need to do, we want to do the motion to suspend the rules first.
157 is just a straight ordinance.
Okay, all right.
A straight ordaining of the paper.
Okay.
But then 158, that gets complicated.
Oh, because, so we didn't have the issue on 157. Okay, thank you. All right, so, so this is just simply to, yeah, ordain the ordinance we enrolled before. What, the mayor has requested that these two papers be expedited. You know, the health director is retiring momentarily, and this will allow the creation of the ordinances that, you will, you know, create and update the organization, the inspectional services, and the Health and Human Services Department so that, so this paper is just making that update to the role of the Veteran Service Coordinator, make sure that they are reporting to the new Director of Health and Human Services primarily. So that's the purpose of this paper, so.
So is that a motion to ordain?
A motion to ordain, yes.
So on Counselor Winslow's motion to ordain, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes.
That paper has been ordained.
The paper is ordained unanimously. And so this next paper is a little bit more complicated, which we will get into.
Paper 158-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the city of Malden, Title II, Chapters 12 and 16, and Title IX, Chapter 16, are hereby amended as noted in the body of said paper, effective upon the successful passage of a home rule petition approving corresponding amendments to the city charter.
Counselor Winslow.
So, this paper, again, it's been requested by the mayor that we seek to ordain this tonight, and what we realized in reviewing the paper was that, you know, we were working on all these set of papers in connection with the development of a home rule petition that will be taken up on April 29th. This update, set of updates, you know, because of the health director is leaving, we want to have those in place so that the process to hire the new Health and Human Service Director is in place. Right now, that responsibility goes with the Board of Health. This would, you know, the new ordinance puts that in the hands of the mayor and the council. So that's, that's one thing. And then just clarifying the reorganization of the departments so that, you know, the inspectors are going to be, inspections are going to be under inspectional services, and human services and health issues are going to be under the new department. And so it's just really clarifying it, that because the health directors resigning, I mean, I even got a email from the head of the Board of Health, Schoony, and she was wondering, I mean, if the health director's leaving, do we need someone in that role in interim? So that, this is really just to make sure that we can expeditiously hire the new Health and Human Services Directors so that there's as little a gap in the leadership of the, you know, under our Health and Human Services. So that's really the main point of it. So I think that, so, and because we enrolled and we did not, and that enrollment included the date being effective when the home rule petition is, we do have to amend the enrolled ordinance, and I think that was, we, I guess I make a motion that we, or the appropriate motion.
We have some lights.
Okay, so, okay, sure.
But, yes, so, so just if I could explain also from the chair, and I'm going to go to Counselor Simonelli.
We have to amend the paper.
This paper doesn't need a amendment to the charter. We can do it by ordinance, but the preamble said it wouldn't take effect until the charter was ratified, and so it's unnecessarily delayed accidentally because it was included with everything. And so what we have to do is we have to unenroll it, amend it to strike that it would be, come, take effect immediately, because we're trying to hire this, this new replacement. We would then enroll it again. If we want to pass it all in the same night, we would need to suspend the rules and then ordain it. Suspending the rules takes eight votes, ordaining it in the same night takes nine votes. So that's why it's kind of complicated. But before we go down that route, I want to make sure that we answer any questions. So Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for clarifying that. I don't, I don't have a problem with the paper. I'm supportive of it. I think it's necessary. I just, I, point of information, I just thought that, I thought Chris Webb was going to hang around for, I know he's retired or retiring, but I thought he was hanging around in the interim or something until we got a replacement. That's not happening. April, was it? And he's not around no more, that's it. Who's handling his responsibilities now? Nobody? Is there an assistant?
I mean, so I think technically it falls to the Board of Health and then staff, so it's not clear.
So we got to get this thing done tonight, then?
So that's, that's.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm all for it. I'm all for it, yeah. I just thought, I heard a rumor that he was kind of, kind of hanging around a little bit.
Yeah, he hung around, you know, for long, but yeah, it is time, we got to move on. That's why the mayor's office is pressing this so that, that, you know, that it clarifies that, you know, one of the things that's happening with the ordinance is that, we're right now, it's the Board of Health who hires the health director, so the mayor and then, but with approval of the city council will be hiring the health director.
Yeah, let's do that right away, then, yeah, that's important. Okay, all right, thank you.
So, so I guess I would make a motion to suspend the rules.
To unenroll.
To unenroll the paper 158-25, so.
So on Counselor Winslow's motion to unenroll 158-25, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, any discussion? I know this is kind of complicated, so a yes vote would unenroll this paper, a no vote would keep it enrolled. The...
Call the roll.
We can do it.
Yeah, the clerk will call the roll.
To unenroll the paper, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay, so now I will make a motion.
That passed unanimously, it's been unenrolled. Counselor Winslow.
So now I make a motion that we amend the paper so that it be, take effect immediately?
Second. So the, the motion by Counselor Winslow is to amend it so that it, it takes effect immediately upon passage, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, any discussion? A yes vote would amend, a no vote would not amend. The clerk will call the roll on the amendment.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, the paper is amended.
Okay, and so then I make a motion to enroll the paper as amended?
I'm going to enroll as amended first, yeah.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to enroll as amended, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, and it's Rule 40.03 that you would want to suspend.
All right, so, so I make a motion that we follow Rule 40.3 so that we, we suspend the rules to allow us to ordain and enroll this paper in the same night?
So on Counselor Winslow's motion, I saw Counselor Crowe to suspend. Although, so the clerk will call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Suspension of rules, Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
That is unanimous, it's got this, it got to the threshold that it needed, the rules are suspended. Counselor Winslow, you have a motion to ordain?
Yeah, I have a motion to ordain the paper.
Seconded by Counselor Simonelli. On the ordaining motion, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, the paper is ordained.
All right, great, thank you so much. Okay.
It's unusual, we don't do that too often.
Thank you for everybody's understanding on that one, so just a lot going on for this stuff.
So the next thing we have is committee reports.
Paper 187-25, the Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper 152, series of 2025, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this paper out favorably to the full council.
Counselor McDonald, a motion to receive the committee report. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Crowe. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The committee report is received. The clerk will read the paper.
Paper 152-25, order that the city council amend its local room occupancy excise under MGL Chapter 64G, subsection 3A, from the current 4% to the rate of 6%.
Counselor McDonald for the committee.
Thank you, Counsel President. So this was a proposal that came out of the many back and forth discussions that we've been having with the mayor's finance team about potential sources of income, and so they brought to us the recommendation that we raise the local room occupancy tax, is a local option that currently caps out at 6%, and they surveyed other neighboring communities, they are all at 6%, Malden is the outlier at only 4%. So this applies to, yes, the one hotel in Malden, as well as a couple of bed and breakfasts and a few other licensed lodging locations. They estimate this would raise about 75,000 to 100,000 in additional income, and so the city council, the finance committee recommended this favorably unanimously back to the full city council as a common sense way to help address our budget shortfall. One other note is that additional, like a higher local option ceiling is one of the things that's being considered under the, the state bill about local, what's it called? The Municipal Empowerment Act, thank you, Counsel Winslow. And so if that does happen, they may come back to us and see about 7% or 8% or whatever it is. But as it is, this was a, this is a pretty easy yes from the finance committee to recommend this back for approval. Our goal is to do this now so it can just go ahead and get baked into the budget projections. It has to be done by the end of May, but we figured, let's go ahead and do it now. It has to be done by the end of May to go effect and, go into effect in July 1, so no time like the present. Thank you.
Any questions?
Second motion.
Awesome, so, thank you, Counselor McDonald. On Counselor McDonald's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counsel President O'Malley.
We now have tabled papers. Is there a motion to take any papers from the table? I believe that we tabled, so... Oh, Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I just had a personal privilege on me.
Counselor Sika?
I have personal privilege, too.
Okay, Counselor McDonald?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we take paper 7425 off the table.
Second. On Counselor McDonald's motion to take 7425 from the table, seconded by Counselor Crowe, the clerk will call the roll.
Okay, so on the motion to take the paper from the table, Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes, that has been removed from the table. Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, so we had some good discussion about this last week. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review the legal guidance in this, and also, we have Dan Coff from the CPC here to answer any questions. Dan did also helpfully let us know, you know, after our discussion last week, which was really trying to drill down into the question of where is the line of what we can both legally and appropriately support with public funds in terms of anything that is, you know, any building that's used by a religious entity, of course, including a church, and the, and one thing that Dan also helpfully pointed out is that there's only nine buildings in Malden that are on the National Register of Historic Places, and this is the only church. So just to say, in terms of precedent that we're setting, obviously, we're trying to be mindful of that and be really explicit in this recommendation that was unanimous in its support from the finance committee, but also to say that, given that some of, what the record will reflect is that the recognized historic nature of the property is part of the decision, and that does not, that does not broadly extend to another whole class of properties. It's a pretty, it's a pretty narrow list, and I think reflects the fact that this particular congregation has been committed to that kind of historic preservation for some time. So I wanted to know, you know, do folks have any more conversations about this? Do we want to talk about this? Do we feel ready for a vote? I'm not trying to push us, I just, I think we've raised all of the questions that there are to raise at this point.
See, I see Counselor Crowe as a light.
I just had a quick question. I know in committee, we did take out some reference to that it could not be, the funds could not be used for religious, somebody uses, so do we have to amend this paper? Or is it cam on a committee without that?
Can you, Carolyn, do we need, because we discussed in the committee report, do we need to formally make that amendment to the paper? Or do we already do that?
We do, so the committee report was received to be amended, but you never got to the point of voting for the amendment?
Okay, okay. Would you like to make that amendment?
So on Counselor Crowe's motion to amend the paper as recommended by the committee report, seconded by Counselor Winslow, is there any discussion on this amendment?
You know, can I just read that really quickly?
Yeah, please.
The text was, so it's a clause to the end, provided that the appropriation is not, or being, is not used, is not to be, is not to be used, to repair or restore any item whose sole purpose is religious, meaning it doesn't have another purpose of holding up the roof, but it is something that is really only for religious practice.
So on...
That's what I said.
On that, on that, the clerk, well, I think, I think for an amendment, we can just take a voice vote. So on the amendment, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The paper is amended. Is there a motion to adopt the order, is that?
Adopt the order as amended.
To adopt the order as amended by Counselor McDonald, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Sika, sorry, and Counselor Cologne Hayes.
I saw Counselor Cologne Hayes make the motion, so.
Oh, okay, so it's Counselor Cologne Hayes's motion, seconded by Counselor Sika, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Sika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counsel President O'Malley. That order has been adopted by 11 to 00.
That has been adopted. The docket is clear. Do we have any personal privilege? Counselor Sika?
Thank you, Counsel President. I just want to remind everybody, because I totally was not thinking about it till this morning, that this weekend is Easter, and Counselor Spatafora and I are hosting our annual Wood Eight Egg Hunt at Linden Park Hunting Field, 10:00 AM shop, and when I say 10:00 AM shop, I mean by 10:05, there will be no eggs on the ground. So please do not show up at 10:30 and ask where the egg hunt is. This is one of our events that does not last very long, so you're better off to get there a little bit before 10:00 AM. There will be the Easter Bunny there to take pictures with, if you would like to see the bunny, but if you are in need of eggs, please be at the park by 10:00. We usually kick off right at 10:00, and it might not even be 10:05, it might be 10:01 that there are no eggs left, so, and the mayor is one of the ones that collects a bunch. So, this Saturday, 10 o'clock, April 19th, Linden Park Hunting Fields for our annual egg hunt, and I want to wish everybody a happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, yeah, also want to thank everybody and wish everybody a wonderful Easter. That'd be great, and we have Patriot's Day coming up, so Maldonians, 250 years ago, were participating in that to, to start the American Revolution, so that spirit lives on here, so, so just celebrate that. And I just wanted to say that related to our city charter, I'm working with the clerk's office to schedule the hearing on the home rule petition, anticipating that that will be happening as part of the council meeting on April 29th. So that is, there'll be a specific public hearing where members of the public can make comments before we adopt that, and we'll have the home petition ready for that, so working on that, so just letting people know that. That was what people have requested, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow, for that. We do appreciate that you're moving forward with that, I think that was really helpful. Counsel McDonald?
Thank you. I wanted to do some promo for the Green Malden Fair, the third annual, it is Saturday, April 26, 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM at Pine Banks, it's at that field house that you never go to otherwise, but it's where the Green Malden Fair is, kind of behind the soccer fields and the, and the ball fields, and it's, it's such a great event, there's a lot of things that you can get and sign up for at the fair, so that's why it's so great. That includes rare recycling opportunities, so that, so for this year, that is styrofoam, you can bring your styrofoam containers, latex paints, electronics, school and office supplies, documents, so shredding, document shredding, and textiles, you can dispose of all of those for free. There are, the vendors include the Mystic River Watershed Association, Black Earth Compost, our compost program, community organizations like Clean Water Action, Creative Heights, Friends of Felsmir Heights, the Greening the Gateway Cities Program, so you can sign up to get a tree, Homeworks Energy, and the Laminar Collective, which help electrify your homes and make them more energy efficient. You can learn about Malden Community Electricity, our bulk purchasing program, the Malden Public Library's Library of Things, so you can borrow things, so you don't have to buy consumer, like, you know, consumer products. The Tree Warden will of course be there, Chris Rosa would not miss this, I know. National Grid's Electric Vehicle Charging Program, the YWCA Malden's Bike Helmet Giveaway, and our Open Space and Recreation, and Open Space and Recreation Plan, and hopefully some new members of our Climate Action Sustainability Commission. So it's going to be a grand time, hope you can come and check it out, and I'll see you there. And I, I just want, I will not be here to make this announcement next week, I'll be out next week, so maybe one of you can remind the good people of Malden about this next week.
Before you shut your microphone off, as someone who also cares about the earth, what do I do with my batteries? Like, I have a giant bucket of batteries, like just normal, does everyone already know this, am I the only person that doesn't know? I have a giant bucket of like, double A, triple A batteries, and I, and I don't know, I know not to throw them in the trash, but I don't, you're saying, so I'm hearing from Counselor Spatafora that it's Home Depot, but can I bring my batteries?
You, yep, you can, the city, so when I Googled, how do I recycle batteries, the city says, throw them away. I feel like that's not the best answer. I agree, I've seen them, no, I've seen them at Home Dep, right, I know, and those will break those bags, I'll tell you. I feel like I have seen them at Home Depot, you can just bring the batteries there and recycle them.